Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call to order the Monday, March 3rd, 2025 meeting of the Stoughton Select Board. The time is 7:02. I see a quorum of the Select Board present. And so as we have Mr. Gito, Ms. Roberts, Vice Chair Carrera, Mr. McCrisky and myself. For all who are able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. So we have an item on the agenda that we'll get to a little bit later. This is the noise bylaw. I mention this now because if there's somebody who would like to speak during that portion of the meeting, I'll make that available to people. You don't have to come up during the citizen's comments, though you're welcome to do so as well if you'd like. So we're going to start off with citizen comments. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Ms. Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. There are hundreds of town employees, and we rely on them to show up every day and do their jobs to the best of their ability. The fact is that most of us will only know a few of those people by name. And it's important we recognize people that have provided decades of service and have now retired. And that recently happened at the Council on Aging on Friday. Carolyn Turner, who has been at the Council on Aging for 22 years, and the building's only been there for 24, so she was practically there from the beginning. Carolyn edited the newsletter, but she did so much more, and she organized so many of the programs for seniors. Now, you can throw some paper plates on a table, slop some food on, and tell people that's a luncheon, and have a good time. Carolyn had such a sense of style. Everything was color-coordinated. The plasticware, the tablecloths, all the paper products. Usually, the hall was well-decorated. She was very up-to-the-minute on color coordination. She planned the entertainment. She brought in people that she knew were compatible with seniors. People that sang the oldies, people that sang folk, people that did very pleasant comedy. And this is important. As I've mentioned to you before, these are, for some seniors, their only social event of the month, or two months, or three months. They come out, and many of them are dressed to the nines, some of them even wear hats, and enjoy themselves for an hour and a half, two hours. These things don't last that long. And the food is sumptuous and tasty. It's things that a lot of folks don't cook at home, and many seniors aren't able to get out to restaurants and places that many of you frequent. I just couldn't let her walk out the door. We did have a little reception for her with some cake and some tea and coffee, and some of us were able to personally thank her for the year she put in. But when people like that leave, they shouldn't just slide out the door Friday afternoon, never to be seen again. From what I understand, she's bought a new home in the place that she always wanted to live, and she might look for some part-time work, but right now she's going to rest. But I couldn't let Carolyn walk out the door without singing her praises. This is one senior who's made a real effort to get every lunch and dinner that she arranged because they were so perfect. Now, I'm lucky. I can get out with relatives and friends still. But when you see the look on their faces, when they greet each other with hugs and kisses, and look forward to seeing each other another time, and I hope, despite Carolyn's retirement, that there'll be many more occasions like she planned. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, we'll move on to the next item of business, Select Board comments. Start with Mr. Gito.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start a little bit early and mention that the Beautification Day for the town is Saturday, April 12th. Now, we had a good turnout last year, and those who helped made a big difference, and they felt good about it. They had a chance to work and help to improve the community. So save the date, April 12th, Saturday, and get out, and maybe you'll meet some new friends, and you can have a good time and feel good about it. That's... And last year, we collected about four tons of trash that didn't end up just rotting by the side of the road. You'll probably be able to do better this next year. You never can tell. I'd like to mention another item, and that is the Senior Property Tax Relief Program. The information sessions will be each week this month, and that is in the town crier. But I went on the Council on Aging portion of the website, and the only reference to the senior tax program was a program that I started about 40 or so years ago. And that was the one that allows seniors to come and work off some of their taxes. So I called the Council on Aging and said, "Where? Where's the rest of the information?" And was told that it wasn't on the website, that people had to come to the Council on Aging events. Now, this was from the director. I didn't talk to the director, but the person that I talked to said that. That's not a good look. A lot of people, a lot of seniors, who perhaps can qualify for this, should be able to see that information. Their family should be able to see it, and their friends should be able to see it to help them, so that they can get the tax relief that we all have agreed to. So, Mr. Town Manager, I hope that you will do something about that, to make sure that that information does get on the website, so that people can avail themselves of that. It's not to stop people from coming to the other events. They just can be more informed, or they might not have the opportunity to even see that I'd like to ask you, Mr. Town Manager, if you would... I'll let you finish. I mean, I...
Just kidding.
No, I knew what you were doing, and I appreciate that. If you'd provide me with the documentation of expenditures for the legal fees spent on any activities relating to SMAC for the last three years, along with the associated invoices from the law firms relating to those fees. There's an awful lot going on. We're spending money on that. SMAC is spending money on that, and that money could be worked on for programs, for saving things, for expansions. And so I'd like to see all of that, and I probably am going to give a call to the chairman of the Board of Directors to see whether I can get information from them, because I think we should understand what those costs are, and we should be working to get things resolved. So I'd like that information, if you could please, by this Thursday. Thank you.
Ms. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to say happy retirement, Carolyn, and please come and volunteer with us. We would love to see you over and over and over again. So thank you very much, and happy retirement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Mr. McCrisky?
I say this all the time, Mr. Chairman, I apologize for the voice. Had laryngitis over the weekend after running a long meeting on Saturday, so I know there'll be some viewers that'll say, "Good, maybe he won't talk as much," but it's getting better, so I think I'm probably going to make up for the lost time. Just a couple of things. Wanted to read this history note that I think is worth repeating when we talk about veterans and so forth. How many people go to the Halleran Field and not know who it was named for? John Halleran, one of our World War II fallen heroes, went missing on August 17th, 1943. He was on a crew of the B-17, number 425437, during a bombing mission in Schweizer, Germany. They were shot down by enemy fighters and crashed near Hagerthown, Germany. Only the co-pilot survived, being captured and was held at his POW. All the others, including John Halleran, were declared missing in action. One year later, Sergeant Halleran was declared killed in action. On November 2024, at 81 years old, after his plane went down and identification tags were found and returned to his family, the search is going on for the remains of the servicemen that were aboard the B-17. So these are the little stories, the tidbits of history, that I think are important, that we remember. We always note on somebody's passing when it's brought to our attention, and I think when it comes to our veterans, that we should always remember those who did not return home to Stoughton. My second one, Mr. Chairman, Carolyn at the... I can't even talk yet. Carolyn at the Council on Aging, I probably know longer than anybody in the room, with the exception of Ms. Walsh. At one time, I was trying to push to get her appointed to the director of the Council on Aging, but it didn't happen. She was an innovator then, is an innovator now, and I happen to frequent the Bean Town Diner for my morning coffee with some of my friends and colleagues, political colleagues from years back. And she comes in with a group of seniors, I believe it's every Thursday, or every other Thursday, I believe it's every Thursday they come in. And some of the people I do know there, actually a lady who knew me when I was born, shows up there. And it is nice to see those gatherings, because some of those people I know have a hard time getting out, and it's the inner circle that gets them out. It's, you know, if somebody's picking somebody up for a ride, or a daughter or a son drops them off, and then they all meet, and it's just... The programs that are run within the doors of the Council on Aging are just amazing, but you can never match, never ever match, how much time and the peace of individuals like Carolyn and other people there that they give of themselves. And I think when we talk about our employees, whether it's in any department of the town, one thing that's important to remember, and I think some, as a matter of fact, I know some do forget, is that these employees have families, they're people too, and they make a difference whatever part of the town they work in. And I just would hope that our residents would know that this town is made up of some great employees who continue to make a difference every day in this town, and have made a difference, in some cases, for many, many years. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, and to those employees that wake up every day, come into the town, work in Town Hall, police, fire, public works, library, Council on Aging, School Department, what our teachers go through in some days with changes in the schools and the kids that are there. I mean, there's challenges in municipal government everywhere, and I think that when we say that we remember and we care, it should start at this board as well. So that's my comment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Carrera.
I just agree with everybody's comments. Carolyn's a very, very nice person, and I wish her the best. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I as well. I have no other comments beyond that, so we'll move on to the Town Manager's comments.
Nothing this evening, sir.
Thank you very much. We're cruising right along, guys. Shouldn't have jinxed it. So the next item on the agenda is, it's a little bit early, but we'll take it now, to consider and discuss noise bylaw. So I'll turn it over to the Town Manager.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was speaking. I think you're talking about the item...
Noise bylaw. It was the noise.
Thank you.
Bylaw.
Yeah, that's right. Joe was talking in my ear. Mr. Chairman, at the request of Peter Murphy, and as a result of some events that occurred last summer with several residents, it became evident that the town needed a town bylaw with respect to noise and the supporting fines associated with breach of those bylaws. So the first shot we took at it didn't really meet the mark of what I was looking for, what Mr. Murphy was looking for. So we asked Brian Winter to take a shot at it, as usual, on the first pass. He's done a wonderful job, and it's before you right now. Now, it does not require a board vote, because it's before the town meeting as a warrant article, but I felt appropriate that the board weigh in on their opinion on this prior to it going, before town meeting. So with that, I think, Mr. Murphy, did you want to... Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. Murphy had a few words to say about it. I'm sorry, Steve. That should have been through you. Sorry about that.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Town Manager. Peter Murphy, Precinct 2, 60 Peters Drive. I did work with Tom on this, and I, you know, again, some of the issues that were there. I did discuss everything with the Chief of Police, also Matt... What's Matt's last name? The Town... Okay. And what happens is, they actually, and actually, the town attorney, they came up, I've read it, I've gone through it, and it came through exactly the way it should be. And what it does is, it deals with the issues that we had to deal with last summer, and not just the, myself, George Jalinski, or anybody else there, the neighbors. There also have been other occurrences within the town. So this here is actually, these parties that pop up are very disturbing. And when you go to, you see this particular party, they're checking people in with a metal detector. That's scary. And my wife called me, I was up in New Hampshire, she called me. She was frantic. She was afraid what was going to happen. And again, the swift action of the Town Manager, the Chief of Police, the enforcement officer, they got right on top of this, and they did a very, very good job. I supported wholeheartedly. I ask you to do the same. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy, Mr. Chairman, it was Matt Reposa. I apologize. Not Matt Kouchat.
Oh, got it, got it.
Thank you.
Matt still did a great job. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy, would you just stay there until this is over?
So we can, so we've all read through the bylaws. I know that there's other people who would like to speak. Mr. Alves, I don't know if you'd like to speak now, or after...
Whenever you want.
By all means, why don't you come up and share with us some of your thoughts?
If you all need to sit next to me, or...
Sure. We're all friends. We're all neighbors. We all get along.
Paul Alves, I am from Precinct 1, 43 Oakland Street, and I'm just calling because I'm here in support of Saint John's Portuguese Club, because I'm the president there, and I'm also going to speak for the other, you know, the Holy Ghost Committee, that's also out of the Saint John's when they do their feasts. And I just wanted to make sure that this doesn't affect the feast. We get our permits, we come in front of the board, get our permits, we try to maintain the volume. I understand it's, we have five feasts, if we include the Brazilian feast also that we have in the summer, that go, you know, that we come in front of the board and get our permits. We do have live entertainment. We usually close the music around 11:45, and I just want to make sure that this doesn't affect us, you know what I'm saying, on the outside festivals. And we also have, you know, we have live, you know, like a party or whatever, we have a DJ at the club. I mean, I'm sure nobody hears it because we're inside. We don't have the music that loud, because the people inside the club would kill us anyways. But I don't want to, you know, my neighbors never complained at all, like about our functions, but we also have a license until 1:00 in the morning. You know, we do respect our neighbors on Washington Street, you know, never had any complaints about our neighbors complaining about our music or anything like that, but like I said, we have a license until 1:00 in the morning. We respect each other, you know, we keep the volume down at inside the club, but I just want to make sure this does not affect our feasts.
This wouldn't affect you, Paul, because you come before the board, we give you a permit to do it.
Exactly.
We set the rules, you know what they are, you've been in here before.
Yep.
And I don't think you're going to have a problem at all with that.
Okay. That's all I'm here for.
And it's religious, so there's no constraints, and you guys know how...
And I figured that, but I just want to make sure that we were on the same page, and...
I will say, Paul, I have heard a complaint of your singing at about 12:45 a.m. This here has more to do with these pop-up parties. And again, they're not regulated or anything like that. They charge a mission to come in. And again, it's, when the police showed up four times in one night, and the officer said, "We can't do anything about it," because they had no teeth. That's why this came about. Yours, you get the permits, and again, that's not the intent of this.
Okay. So... Yeah. I mean, last year, we had, we had our Saint John's feast, and it kind of happened that my next-door neighbors at, right across the street from the Plaza, also had, I think, a wedding that night. They were partying, we were partying, so it was right, you know, 1:38 that day was busy. But they were great. Our neighbors are great, and I have no complaints. I mean, there was a couple of people that went on Facebook, you know, like Facebook, you know how they are on Facebook, and they start bashing and bashing, and it was great because a lot of the community started, you know, stepping up for us and saying, "Yeah, they do it four times a year. They're not bothering anybody. We're not starting trouble. We're just, it's Portuguese music." I know people love to listen to Portuguese music, and they like listen to me sing, because I sang at the feast last year, so, Mr. Carter, I do have a nice voice, buddy.
That's what they said.
That's what they talked about on Facebook as well.
But no, that's all I was here for. And I'm fully in support with the noise ordinance, because, I mean, I'm not one, and I can tell you, I have been living next to people that party, and you know what? They don't bother me. The noise doesn't bother me. I know it bothers some older people and, you know, some other people that might want, you know, to sleep. I mean, I can sleep through noise, it doesn't make a difference, but I think as long as they're having a good time and they're not bothering anybody, I know the noise level can, you know, bring it down a little bit, and I understand the noise ordinance to give the police at least, you know, something like a leverage, saying, "Listen, it is 11:00. You guys got to lower it down or shut it down." You know, that I understand. I would never, myself, call anybody, because I like to have fun, and I think people should have a little bit of fun, just respect each other, you know? That I understand.
There is one other aspect that we put into this noise ordinance, and one that had to deal with is the truck Jake Brake. And Juan, that lives on Pleasant Street, has talked to this board about that. So I was glad to see that included into this noise ordinance, and I'm sure at town meeting, he will be very vocal and speak up in favor of this. But again, it has more to do with these parties that get out of hand, and the police now have something to enforce, and the code enforcement officer, it now has some teeth to act upon it. But again, thank you. Did, I'm sorry, did you have a question, Lou?
I do.
Just before you do, I, it's okay, I just wanted to ask, we have Brian Winter on line, he drafted this, and I just wanted to confirm, I'm looking through the language, is there a, you know, protection for, like, Portuguese clubs or other such, you know, permanent parties?
So...
It's glued in here. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer that question. So there's no explicit call-out. There's a section for exemptions, and we didn't explicitly exempt a licensed business, because that would be sort of a blanket exemption, they could never be in violation. And so it's handled a different way. And so there's two levels of violation. There's a noise pollution level, and then there's a noise injury level. And for the pollution, it has to be a noise that is of such a quality that would, it would annoy or disturb the reasonable quiet or comfort of persons, you know, in an adjacent dwelling, hotel, hospital, or residence or office, et cetera. And so my response to your question would be, it would be unreasonable for anyone to deem that an annoyance or disturbance or hazard if it's a licensed business operating within the corners of its license.
Okay. I appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure that that answers my question, so that's perfect. So now I can go at least until 1:00 in the morning, very loud, no problem. My neighbors are going to love me. But I'm hoping to see Mr. Murphy over here at the feast, enjoying himself, and everybody too. I'll be coming in front of you guys pretty soon, so I'll be sending over the paperwork soon.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you very much, and I think that's it.
Appreciate it. Excellent. So, actually, we go around asking questions. Mr. Gito, is there a question that you had?
Yes. I read through this, and I agree with almost everything in it. I talked with Attorney Winter on this topic a couple days ago, and I would propose a friendly change on a section that deals with leaf blowers, power tools, and so on and so forth. 137-4, Section B. And it starts off by saying, "Every day from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., no person shall operate a leaf blower, power tool, power equipment, construction tool, heavy machinery or vehicles, perform tree or grass cutting or trimming, et cetera." I would suggest that you add in this, right after 7:00 p.m., say, "7:00 p.m. or sunset," whichever is later. And the reason that I say that is that in the summertime, some people get home from work kind of late, and they don't have time to stop mowing their lawn or doing whatever other outside work that they're going to do. So it only affects the time period in the summer when people can be outside and maintain their property. And I was wondering if you'd be willing to include that, or suggest to the persons that they add this into the article when it goes to town meeting.
Two things. One is, technically, this is not my article. This is from the Town Manager, I believe, so it would be their article to, you know, to modify it as need be. Second of all, I agree with you, the word sunset, but I've been working on sunset for years and years on a different article, so...
No, you did a fine job on that one.
Well, thank you. And, no, I'm just...
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I agree with you. I mean, if they're, if they can do a friendly amendment to it, by all means, because I know what you, my wife said the same thing. Not everybody, you know, can get their things done by 7:00 p.m. Now, it's, you know, a sunset, whatever you want to put. Now, it's, you know, a sunset, whatever you want to put, I...
Thank you.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
This is, this is going to be in the current annual town meeting, right? So that...
[inaudible]
Yeah, yeah, so the, the, the horse has already left the barn on this one, but, but at the town meeting, we can make whatever changes we'd like to make.
The town manager, we responsible for making any changes?
Well, it's actually a board policy. So the, the board, we would draft a, if the board is in agreement...
We'd have to draft an amendment.
We'd draft an amendment to present on the town meeting.
Like I said, I, it's more of a case of who's going to carry the ball, that's all.
The, the board has to...
By all means, you're doing a great job.
The only, the only question I have to, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Jito, is sunset during the summer is like, almost 9 o'clock sometimes. The sun's out till like 8:30 and...
And your point?
And my point is, it's, it, that's, that's a little bit stretching it, you know? Some people are putting their children to bed at, at 7:00 or 8:00, you know, infants and stuff like that. And that might be stretching it, because sunset is a half hour light after the sun goes down. That's when sunset is, not when the sun goes down, it's when the light drops, as you would if you were hunting.
I thought that that would be dawn to dusk. That's, that would be my interpretation of the difference between sunset...
I'm just, I'm just telling you that in the, that because of the way we roll forward, it's going to be 9 o'clock, you're going to have lawn mowers.
It's a suggestion through you, Mr. Chairman.
No, I was just hoping to point that out to you, that...
And, and we can, we can deal with it.
Mr. Winter, I, I have a question for you, and I'll turn it over to you in just one moment. So there, there is an area of the, of the law that I, I've never heard people refer to, but we all kind of know about, which is where enforcement is, you know, not necessarily automatic. You know, if you're going 56 miles an hour in a 55 zone, you're not, you know, that, typically, the police won't pull you over for that. In this case, you might have somebody out there who's mowing their lawn, you know, they do it once, and it's, it's 7:35. And I imagine that there, there probably is, we're not going to have, you know, a SWAT team come out, because you're, because you're mowing your lawn. But at the same time, we need to sort of snap the line and say, you know, there's these times that we have to, we have to abide by. How exactly is that, do we articulate that, at least to ourselves, not necessarily in the document? That this is not, that, you know, we say 7 o'clock, but, you know, we're also going to be, everyone's going to be reasonable. However, if you're out there every day, building your, you know, a cabin in your backyard, and it's extremely loud until 8 o'clock at night, then you would expect somebody to come and just ask you to stop.
Certainly, and, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to respond to that, and to you, and the board members, and the audience. So one of the first steps that I, I took when I was drafting this is to meet with your code enforcement officer, as well as a representative, one of the deputy chiefs from your department, you know, who are the, you know, for lack of a better term, the boots on the ground. They're the enforcers, they're the town officials, they're actually going to be working with this bylaw, and enforcing it when necessary. And so I discussed the mechanics of this, and the standards of this bylaw, and how we intended to enforce it. And so the answer to your question is that, we never really codify that in a piece of legislation like this, because it's left by and large at the discretion of the town officials, that used to fit to a point, to do this job, and be the ambassadors of town hall towards your public. And so what often happens in just, in practical terms, is that these individuals interact with these businesses or residences all the time. They get the calls, they get the complaints, they go out and meet with these people, and they, they build relationships for better or worse. And so they know where the problems are, and they know where the people, they occasionally interact with them, but aren't really the problem, it was just a misunderstanding, or an exceptional situation. And so they know the difference, because this is what they do for a living, this is part of their job, where they do it every day. They're very experienced, and you have a robust enforcement team, which is a good thing. And so that's where this discretion comes into play, where they're going to triage their resources, right? And so they're going to use their resources, so best served for the town, which means they're going to address the most problematic situations, and that's the ones that are the most offensive, the ones that are the most recurring, and so on and so forth. And so having worked with these folks for many, many years in the town of Stoughton, I know that in a great deal of times, it's just a casual conversation in front of someone's house that doesn't even lead to a written warning, might, might not even lead to a verbal warning. It might just be a, "You should be aware that the town of Stoughton has a bylaw, and the bylaw has certain requirements." You know, the fines in the, in the more legal enforcement, the more strict enforcement, is really reserved for the, the more extraordinary cases, where there's just no other tool available for the job. And that's when they start to consider, you know, fines and, and other avenues for enforcement. So that's where that discretion comes into play, when, when they are responding to a call regarding a potential violation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Roberts?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Through you to the town manager, and maybe to our town council. My question is related to the noise bylaw that will go into effect if it is passed at town meeting. But specifically, what's going on now? Because there seems to be a connection between the police enforcing the bylaws, the language around disturbing the peace. So I guess at the heart of what I'm asking, what bylaw are we following at this time? What bylaw are the police, law enforcement enforcing at this time? And what has changed? Is it only the dates, I'm sorry, the times that have changed?
Sure. Brian, if you'll elaborate, but what I will say is, to my knowledge, there is no bylaw on the books for a noise ordinance, until this, the passage of this policy. With respect to disturbing of the peace, that's, that's a crime. This is more of a breach of a town ordinance. So Brian, if you, through you, Mr. Chairman, if Brian, if you'd like to elaborate.
Yeah, I'm happy to, that's your pleasure, Mr. Chairman. And so to, to answer Select Board Member Roberts' question, currently, there is no bylaw. And so there's no civil enforcement mechanism in Stoughton for noise violations. And so the only two other noise violation regulations or statutes that we have are in two areas. One is DEP. It actually comes under, you know, air quality, because noise pollution, air quality. And so there's this very scientific formula, and calculus, and analysis that you have to do to enforce DEP regulations. And then there's what Mr. Coulter referred to, which is, you know, the criminal aspects of it. And so at a certain point, it gets so extreme, you know, it pours out onto the streets, or there's, there's some sort of other disturbance that it becomes criminal. And so those are pretty high bars for the police department to enforce, because not everything, and in fact, there's probably a lot of things, that don't fall into either of those categories. And so this is the gap that the bylaw fills. It creates a civil enforcement mechanism that's, that's not a crime, it's not a criminal enforcement mechanism for the police to, to enforce, and it's not a DEP regulatory enforcement mechanism that requires, you know, machines, and calibration, and, and professionals to come in and study something. So this is a much more common sense, practical, civil enforcement mechanism that we don't have now, that can be actually enforced by the staff that you already do have.
Thank you, Brian.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you for that clarification. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. McCrisky, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, so I guess there's, there's two items to consider. One is simply a vote for or against this, this particular article, and our recommendation, perhaps, to town meeting. But also, if there's any changes, and Mr. Jito recommended a, a potential change, that would have to be a motion that the Select Board could, could champion. Are there any changes that people would like to likewise request? And then, or did we just want to have a motion to, to approve this as is?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board of selectmen make a, a vote of support to town meeting on the noise bylaw.
Second. Okay. There's a motion and a second to, to, a vote for yes would, would be to recommend this to town meeting, this article to town meeting. Mr. Town Manager?
Just...
There is.
Just a point of information, Mr. Chairman, I know you'll agree, Mr. Jito also has the right to offer that amendment, not as a selectman member, and as a member of the board of selectmen, but as a town meeting representative.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, yeah, any comments, questions, or debate? Do you, well, so now we can discuss the, the motion?
I would like to...
Do you mind turning your mic on? Yes, turn your mic on.
I would like to add on 137.4, Section B, in the beginning of the first sentence, "Every day from 7:00 p.m. or sunset, whichever is later, to 7:00 a.m." So that would be the change that I would make in this, in this article.
Okay, the, the motion was to, yeah, can't be amended here, okay. So that will be a change that we'll have to bring to town meeting. So let's just start with, with the current motion, just to...
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, did I say we can make that change at town meeting floor?
Well, anybody could, any, any member of the...
Yeah, at the town meeting rep.
Yeah, anybody could do it.
Yeah, not this board. Thank you, I just want to be clear.
Yep. So the motion is to, to accept this as is, and, and to recommend it and support it, and support it and recommend it to town meeting. So to that, for that motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
All just abstained.
One abstention. Okay, so we, we have one abstention, are there any other, well, I guess, we've, we've...
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't mean to speak for Mr. Jito, but I'm, I'm not sure Mr. Jito understands that we're not able to change the article here. It can only be changed on the town meeting floor. We can't change the, the article at this time, it's, it's been closed, or the, the warrant's been closed. But, so the change you seek, Lou, it sounds like a great idea, it can only happen on town meeting floor.
Thank you. Okay, so we're, we are a little bit early, but, but we can move on to the next item, the Stoughton Reads Together book for 2025. By the way, sorry...
I just want to say thank you for all the parties involved pulling this, this together, they did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So for those who don't know me, those at home, I'm the director of the library, Christopher McGee, and I'm here with our outreach coordinator, Christine Yakabuchi. So we're here to talk about, thank you, about Stoughton Reads Together for 2025. But just to kind of recap, this is a program that the library has put on for, for many years. It took a little hiatus during COVID, as many things did. But we relaunched it last year, and we updated it a little bit, so it now includes all ages. And we try to do multiple events, and we try to include as many people as we can, we try to include as many town departments as we can. The idea, of course, is always to promote literacy, as, as most things that we do at the library. But in addition to that, this really is a community initiative. The concept is that, you know, you give someone, everyone in the community, a shared topic of conversation. So whether they read the book, which we hope that they do, or the, or both books, or whether they just come to a library event, they watch something that we broadcast on Smack, or, or on one of our other Zoom, or something like that. But they're participating in something as a shared community, and it gives them topics, themes to discuss. So that's, that's kind of what we really aim to do. We were very successful last year, we had over 800 people participate in an event. We had multiple town departments, you know, we had all kinds of octopus-related things that had to do with the, the fun book that we had last year. So I'm going to let Christine talk about what we're doing this year.
Hopefully you can hear, ooh, hopefully you can hear me. So this year, we took a similar approach, involves different departments, and the committee, I want to say there's 13 people on the committee. And so I'm excited tonight to be able to tell you what our 2025 title is, and each of you have a copy in, in front of you. We've chosen, it's called "A Boston Harbor's Island Adventure: The Great Brewster Journal of 1891." So what you'll see, when you, when you peek inside, it truly is a journal, or a scrapbook, that a Harvard professor found, I forget what, where the bookstore was, and he just knew, okay, this is important, and he, you know, and he bought it. And if you, you look through it, it's a captivating story, which, of course, we want to, you know, pick something like that. It has beautiful photos, but also the themes of it, it's about four women who take this journey to Great Brewster Island. And so there's themes like escapism, right, island life, finding your identity, female fellowship, and the importance of capturing your history. So all of those are just as relevant today as they were in 1891. And what's interesting is, in the book, they don't identify themselves, you don't have their names. But essentially, it's like, they describe it as a 19th century Facebook page, right? Except without their names. Which now that wouldn't happen, everybody likes to make sure they're known. So in 2022, volunteers who stumbled upon the journal, they started researching it with Friends of the Boston Harbor Islands, and Stephanie Shuro, who's also mentioned as an author on the book. And they really dove into trying to figure out who these women were. So that's basically what the book is all about, and it's, it's just a fun read, and interesting in many different ways. So if you look at your brochure, you'll see that we have over 20 events this year, we're targeting mid-March through the end of April. One of, you know, there's many events I'm excited about, but there's, one of them is an evening author talk and book signing with Stephanie Shuro and members of the Friends of the Boston Harbor Islands, which will be really exciting. We're looking forward to finding out firsthand how they figured out and, and wrote this book. We also have many other programs with town departments, like Stoughton Historical Society, obviously fits right in. Sorry. The Youth Commission, Teresa Tapper's running some journal, journaling programs as well. And so you'll see on the back, there's a list of all the partners that we, that we have, you know, Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation, IKEA, et cetera. So we're, we feel very, very fortunate to be able to really make it a community event. And that we feel that we've hit all age groups, and I wanted to show you, I didn't give everybody a copy of this, however, it's called "The Ship in the Window" by Travis Jonker. And we have children's programs that are associated with that. And the themes of that are more of, you know, envisioning possibilities, and taking action, pursuing your dreams, which is really what these women did too in the adult book. So I hope that you will come to the programs and enjoy them with us. And for a full list of programs for those who, of the residents at home, they can be found on our website and our event calendar.
Obviously, we have copies of both of these books at the library. So even though we didn't give you a copy of the, the children's book, it is a very fun read by a Caldecott Award winner. So, and we're, we're putting it in at the Lesa Playground in our story walk there, too. So, you know, if you, if you have some time in the spring to maybe walk around over in the Bird Street Conservation Area, you can read it there, if you don't want to come and get it at the library.
Thank you so much.
I just, I just want to say one thing, that journaling's a big thing. And I hunted in Maine, and this old woman that took us in, my father had been there...
in Maine, and this old woman that took us in, my father had been there 28 years before, and then I came in, I was the youngest one to ever go hunting with them. And I'd always see her writing in this book. And she would journal. And I ended up being there 20 years with her. And her, when she passed away, it really broke my heart. But her daughters came up to me and said, we read my mother's journals, and we thank you for being so nice to her, because I, I was, I would help her cook and stuff like that. So from that point, I started journaling. And I have written since 86. Every day, what goes on. And, and sometimes it pays off. You know, you, you end up going to court, and you bring it in, and the judge looks at you, and what's that? And I says, well, I got the book from the incident, but I'm showing you that it didn't just get written down yesterday, that this goes on. And it, it, it pays off. But journaling's unbelievable. I didn't know that she did it, so.
Well, and I think journaling's important for a couple of reasons, right? Your social, emotional health, just daily by journaling. But again, capturing your history, right? That the family members were able to read her journal and appreciate that. So hopefully participants in the programs will, will get that sense as well.
I didn't know I was journaling until someone told me I was journaling. My mom has been writing for 40 years. My mom's 82 years old now, and she was, had one of those moments where she had to tell me where everything was, just in case. I will need to attract the trailer to move the books. I mean, it was unreal, but. I journal. I have a remarkable, and I love this thing. You could keep everything. And then somebody looked at some of the things and said, it was journaling. And you should print some of this and make a book of all your renderings and your visions that you had at the Select Board, as you'd probably need two years of, you know, scrubbing out all the other stuff, political, you know, my personal commentary, you know. But it is, like Scott says, it's nice when you can go to something and look back, you know. And I record as well, you know, just so. But it, it is amazing when you look back and you say, I'm glad I did that. You know, so everybody has their way of journaling, that's for sure.
And if you ever get the chance to look at Joe's journaling, it's absolutely perfect handwriting. Could be pros. It's really something.
I can't deny what I said, because I wrote it so neat. I can't say, geez, that was misspelled, or I didn't.
Look at what he just said about Scott.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing me. To Chris and Christine. This is, the setup, Stoughton Reads Together, is like a Stoughton Book Club, right? You read the book, and you go, and you just, you watch a film, or you discuss the, whatever the elements are in the books, and then you talk about what your takeaway is. Is that correct? And then you have light refreshments, what you tell us.
So, yes and no, I guess, right? So, yes, it's, we have, it's like a book club, right? That we offer, we're going to have, I think, three different book discussions. But it's really, you're, I think you're speaking to like the octopus teacher that we showed.
You know I love that. I was so happy I attended that event. Thank you.
Yeah, so, yes, we'll, we'll have different events, but that's just it. There's going to be so many. We have, you know, crafting events, and presenters, and so it's just, it's a very broad base of programs. So I just, I always try to caution people from saying that all we do is, you know, discuss books.
Certainly, the, the core of the program is, are the two books, and, and we do have a committee of folks who meet many times to select the book, and in this case, both, both books. But, and we, we encourage people, I certainly think, you know, you get, you'll get some ideas for your journaling. Maybe you want to include a little poem in the side, like the ladies do.
Oh, I have poems.
There you go. All right, so you're ahead. So there's, there's certainly a lot that you can get from reading the book, but we want to be as inclusive as possible. So partly having all these books available at the library means that, you know, you don't necessarily have to buy them, you can come and borrow them. But you can attend events that, you know, that, you can come and hear, you know, Mr. McCarran speak from the Stoughton Historical Society, even if you haven't read the book. So we want to have as many people participate in these events and have this shared conversation, even if, you know, they're not necessarily the best readers. You can also find it, it's available in, in digital format from the, our Libby app. So you can get it that way. If you're, if you're, you know, if that's easier for you, you can, you know, make the font bigger, and you still see all the pictures and all of that stuff, too, because there are watercolored photos, or, or images that the ladies did as well. So there's a lot to be gotten out of it, even if you're not, you know, really all that much of a reader.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is a call for the April 8, 2025 election ballot. You'll see, one thing I'd like to call out on this, it comes up periodically whenever we have ballot measures. There's a ballot question that's listed on here, and the language in there, it reads, shall the town of Stoughton be allowed to exempt from the provision of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called, the amount required to pay for the bonds issued in order to construct a new 550-student K through five elementary school, and related site development on town-owned property located off Park Street in Stoughton. And periodically, when, when ballot measures come up, people reference the language of the ballot question being, you know, unclear, or not including enough detail, a variety of similar observations. And I just wanted to make people aware that the language for the exclusion is prescribed by law. It's very, it's general law, Chapter 59, Section 21C, K. And basically, it's verbatim what we just wrote, read. It says, shall the city or town of blank be allowed to exclude from the provision of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called, the amount required to pay for the bond issued in order to, and then it says, state the purpose or purposes for which the monies for the local issue will be used. So as much as, I know there's some people who bemoan the language, and I can understand that sentiment, the language is provided by the statute itself, and can't really be changed in any meaningful way. And that might be frustrating to people who want to understand what, what it actually is, what's the dollar amount, or what's, you know, what's specifically happening. Unfortunately, those are just things that are not allowed in, in that ballot measure. So probably here, you know, people who, who haven't watched this meeting might bring it up. We'll hear it throughout the, the next couple of, like, I guess, the next month or so. But I just wanted to make people aware of, of that language. Beyond that, this is, you know, we, we have to, to vote this 35 days before, I think it's no fewer than 35 days. And this, April 8 is 36 days away. So are there any questions, or do people just want to make a motion to, to approve it? I've got some language that was provided by Brian Winter, specifically on, you know, what one might want to say. If there's no additional comments, I'll just read that, and if somebody wants to make that motion.
So made, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. So the, the motion is, in accordance with general law, Chapter 54, Section 63, and general law, Chapter 59, Section 21C, I move that the board call for an election to be held on Tuesday, the 8th day of April, 2025, and that the warrant therefore shall be in, in the form of the election warrant provided by the town clerk's office, including the election of municipal officers and the ballot question as set forth therein. So that, that motion was made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Ms. Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that passes unanimously. And then the final item, before we get to the consent agenda, we have open the warrant for a special town meeting within the annual town meeting. Mr. Coulter.
Caught me off guard there, Mr. Kevy. We just need a formal vote to.
You just turned the mic on? I'm sorry.
We need a vote by the board to open a, the warrant for the special town meeting that we'll have within the annual town meeting, and there will be six agenda items.
Okay.
Motion to open the warrant, as stated.
Second.
Okay, motion to open a special town meeting warrant for a special town meeting that will occur within the annual town meeting, has been made by Vice Chair Carrera, seconded by Mr. McCrisky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. I'll go down. So the last item is the consent agenda. Not sure if Brian's still on, I think he might have hopped off. Is there anything that anybody has?
I have.
There you are. How's it going, Mr. Winter?
I have questions on.
Yeah, okay. So Mr. Winter's on, if there's something related to one of the items that, that he might be able to.
One, one is probably, it could be a house cleaning maneuver, is B, where it says license agreement. That's usually a lease agreement, where there's money involved. It should not be a license. A license gives a different type of approach to a company on our properties. It should be a lease agreement.
I think you're 100% correct. Brian, if you haven't seen this, this is a recurring lease that we have done every year. Unless I'm mistaken, I think Mr. Carrera is correct. That should read lease agreement. Have you seen this lease agreement?
No. So what I can tell you is that, I think it was in 2022, when we first entered into this, this sort of arrangement. And I don't recall if we approached it as a lease or a license. I think we actually might have started it as a license.
That's incorrect. We started it as a lease.
Involvement. But I think it may have evolved since then. But the, the version that I drafted, I think originally, back in 2022, contemplated a license, because that's something that the board can grant without involving a town meeting vote.
We don't, we don't need.
That's my recollection from, what, almost three years ago now, so I haven't seen it since.
My mic's a little hot, but I, I think our procurement officer is on, she raised her hand. Fran, would you like to, to join the conversation?
Hi, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Brian. We did agree that it was going to be a license agreement, just because it, it is revocable. And I don't think it would be an issue if we changed it to lease agreement, but we did, because it's a real property, 30B, which is called a license. That's it.
And may I add, and with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I think the financial terms and all the terms that you would expect to see in the lease are actually in the license. And so in terms of, you know, what they get and what we get, I think they would be the same terms, just under a different name. But because of procurement issues, as Fran mentioned, and because of town meeting issues, as I mentioned, we just thought it was better cast as a license.
Otherwise, would that have to go before town meeting?
No.
If it's a lease?
No.
Because it's, you're right, Scott, it's an existing lease.
It's, it's a lease that we did before. A license gives them a, a different right than a lease. We're in control of the lease, we can cancel it at any time. The lease also gives us the right to ask for a bond to be placed on it, which I know Fran knows I said I wanted a bond, because I didn't want crap left behind in the town to be.
And there is a bond on this, Scott, per your recommendation.
On it. So I don't want to turn this into, you don't give a license to somebody to operate on town-owned property, unless it's for, like, a carnival or something like that. This is a lease that comes up every year. And it's, it's better that it's a lease than a license. Because a license would also have a fee on it. We could charge them a fee, and whatever else we wanted to charge. A lease is just an agreement, it's short-term, and if they want to fulfill it more than three years, then we got to do something else. But I, I don't, I don't see stretching this into procurement or anything like that. The board has the right to do what we did.
Any other comments or questions about any of the other items on the consent agenda?
I have a question, additional question regarding the electric lease fire station for 30 Freeman. And my question, because I just received this, this email, it was just distributed tonight, intended to be distributed earlier, if, and it's from Brian Winter, Town Council winner. If you can summarize, what is this attachment? Because I haven't, I don't know the context and how it relates to this.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, it's your pleasure, I'm happy to respond.
Yes.
So just summarizing that email, so I was asked to provide just a little clarification on why I thought the Select Board had the authority to execute this. And the long and short of it, without going into sort of the legalese and details, is that there's an existing easement there that's been in place. There's a utility service that's already provided, you know, an equipment, conduit corridor, that already exists. The only thing that's missing is it was never memorialized in a written document recorded with the Registry of Deeds. But that's not the only way to create an easement. And so going back a great deal of time, that, that easement has existed, in fact, even though it was never memorialized in a document. And so the utility's only asking us now to memorialize it in a written agreement, which is what's before you to vote. So my opinion is that the Select Board has the, the authority to do that, and doesn't need to refer it to town meeting, which is, you know, you've seen before, we often refer, you know, property issues to town meeting, because sometimes we need a town meeting vote before we do that. But in this case, you're creating a new interest. You're just memorializing one that's existed for this site for a great long time. So that's the subject of that, that email that I circulated.
Thank you, Mr. Winter. Attorney Winter.
Yeah, Vice Chair Carrera.
Yes, through you, Mr. Kevy, to Attorney Winter. Brian, this is Massachusetts Electric? It's not National Grid or anything like that? Because the.
It's a DBA.
How come we didn't do this as an open hearing thing? Because when I read it, it says, oh, we're going to put a pole here, maybe, and a this there, and a this there. Shouldn't that been like an open hearing? If, we always do that with poles and, and, and stuff like that. The last one was an open hearing, too.
So if they need to locate poles across a public way, that's the grant of location, and they would need to come back and apply and request a hearing before you. But if they don't need to cross a public way, if it's all on private property, then they don't need that GOL. And so this is an easement on private land.
So this is for the fire station, right? Fire station property on Freeman?
30 Freeman, yep.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't just do something that was quick, and we're going to hear about it. You know, you always do hearings on poles.
No, and I, just so the board is aware, and through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Carrera, this is something I discussed with, with Mark Tisdale, and we reviewed this when we reviewed it several weeks ago, if not, if not a month or more ago, and vetted it in terms of what they were asking for compared to what exists. And so I, I think it fits within the four corners. But if for some reason, you know, the service changes, and they need to do work in or across the public way, then they're just going to have to come back, and you'll go through your normal process that you're, that you're accustomed to, a public hearing, and a, a granted location application, and anything else that's associated with it.
It would have been nice to have some information prior to knowing that this was coming tonight, if it was discussed a while ago, and then we would have been ready for it, so that I would have just known what we were, so there was nothing in here, just a lease agreement. I mean, an easement.
So if there's, yes. Yes. I think you just have to turn your mic on.
Yes, a point of clarification, item B. Before you, Mr. Chairman, bring it to a vote, I don't think, before we moved on, we built consensus on whether that should be a lease or a license. And I ask council, does it matter to him if it's a lease?
And I ask counsel, does it matter to him if it's a lease or a license?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, to the manager, I think it does make a legal difference ultimately, because if we're granting a formal lease of a term, even if it's just three years, we would have to go through procurement to do that. But by law, a license is not an interest in property because it's revocable, and so it doesn't trigger procurement. And so we could do procurement and we could pursue a lease, but we would have to, you know, put it out the same way we do everything in procurement. And that doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, your licensee here is, is gonna succeed at securing that lease.
Are we required to go through?
But I just, it's a process.
Brian, if I may, aren't we, are we required to go through procurement, as I remember procurement class, if it's an extension of an existing lease?
Well, and so, and the one that I drafted in 2022 is a license. And so I, I don't know what the board has done since 2022, if it got converted to a lease. But as I originally drafted, it was a license. And so if you just renewed that license year after year, then it wouldn't be a lease. We'd have to reform it as a lease, and that would trigger procurement.
That came in that night as a lease, when we spoke about it in '22. I know it didn't come as a license. It was a lease because I said that I wanted certain things hooked to it. I don't know how it gets to be a license. It's, it's not a license. It's a piece of property owned by the town and we're allowing them to use it. They're leasing it. It's not a license to do whatever they want because we gave them the license, because we would have written up something to go with a license. A license would be a finite thing directing what's gonna happen on the property. That's why I wanted, we, we were giving them the lease. That's what they asked for, they wanted to lease the property. And then we set it at, I think it was 1,200 dollars or something. I don't, I don't, I don't see where, what we're doing tonight is wrong and has to be procurement, but there's no way, because we have already given it twice to the same company. So where, where does procurement enter into this? Did we do something wrong two times in a row? And if it had to change, it should have came back here and we should have been told that it should have been a license. And I don't think it should be, I think it should be a lease. They're asking to use it short term.
So we've got three items on our consent agenda. And up till now, I've just asked people out questions about any of those, but I'll ask, is there any item on the consent agenda that anybody would like to pull? Okay.
Do you want to, like, give a question to get more information on it? Or are we just going to pull it and then vote it in anyhow?
Well, if, with this one, if, if you want to pull it, then it would be probably wise for us to just put it on our next, next agenda and, and get the questions answered that you, you have. There's some historical stuff that.
I would, I would ask that through you, Mr. Chairman, if it's all right with the board.
Yeah, so.
And that Tom can work on it.
We'll pull item B for tonight.
But I want to be involved in it.
Yeah. There's, the history of this exists somewhere, we just have to figure it out, all out and figure out what, what happened when. And so we'll, we'll move item B to our next, next meeting. Items A and C, though, remain. So this is the approval of in-person, early voting for April 8th, 2025 election. And item C is a 30 Freeman Street electric easement.
I'd like to discuss.
Okay. So we'll, we'll pull that, let's pull that for discussion. So item A, approval of in-person, early voting for April 8th, 2025, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Okay, made by Ms. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Gito. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So item A is unanimous. Item B will be on our next agenda, so item C for discussion.
I have finally put my mic on. Is that easement in place at the present, is, is the electrical service in place at the present time? Does anybody know the answer to that?
I, no, I don't know off the top of my head. I'm guessing perhaps the.
Mr. Town Manager?
Mr. Coulter, are you aware, there's a question about whether or not, with regard to the easement, granting of an easement. Is there currently electrical, you're asking, is there electricity in the fire station? Is that, is that easement currently being used?
I assume it is. I can check on that tomorrow morning and get back to the members.
Well.
I didn't work on this easement, Lou.
If, if, when I saw that easement through the middle of a single piece of property, it seems as though if it's not in service, that we should move it to the edge of the property and get it out of the way so that if, if at some point we want to sell that property, it's not a, a burden to, to anyone to have to deal with that. And that's what I, I sent and.
You did. You sent a note to me on that.
Or left a voicemail for you to look at that.
I'm sorry, I overlooked that, Lou. Brian, could you speak to that? Are we at liberty to move the easement?
So I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head. I conferred with Mr. Tisdale about it and.
Well, if we don't know the answer to the question, then could we table this and get the answer to the question? I mean, why would we put an easement through the middle of a piece of property that's in the middle of town that may, in fact, have more value if we sold it?
Well, we're currently renovating it for the purpose of, of having a, a headquarters there. I don't think there's a plan anytime in the next couple of decades to sell it. But I think your point's still, you know, worth exploring, exploring. So if, if the members of the board are okay, we can table this, pick this back up on our next meeting as well.
And I'll have Mr. Tisdale at the next meeting to ask that question.
Excellent. Okay, so, and that, so items B and C, we'll, we'll pick up at our next meeting. So there's, that's, that's our whole agenda. Is there a motion to?
Adjourn.
Okay, so Mr. Gito made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Vice Chair Carrera. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions? Have a wonderful evening. It is, the time is 8:20. Meeting adjourned.